I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Public Library Board of Trustees. Welcome. We'll begin by introducing ourselves, and if you care to share what you're reading, please do. Jamie, you want to start us off, please?
My name is Jamie Burkhart, and I just started reading the Hunger Games prequel, The Songbirds, but I don't remember the whole title.
Good tip, it's a prequel.
Well, How Snow Got to Be How He Is.
All right. I'm David Ferguson, and just finished Cocaine Blues, which is, I don't know where the writer's from, maybe Australia, but it takes place in Australia with an Australian female detective. It's not really a detective, I guess, I don't know, it's kind of hard to explain.
I'm Chris Harrison, and I just started reading a children's book out of the Love, Sugar, Magic series.
I'm Mike Singer, and I'm just about to finish John Meacham's The World.
Kari Essery, and I'm about to pick up a book at the Ellisville Library, but I can't remember the title, so I'm sorry.
Kathy Loser, and I'm looking forward to reading, I've got on order, The Minister's Daughter, which is the biography of Charlotte Zitlow.
Wow.
I'm Marilyn Wood, and I'm reading a book called Fierce Conversations, just about communication styles.
And I'm John Walsh, I'm rereading The Warden by Anthony Trollope. And, let's see, our first item tonight is a proposal to select design option for new southwest branch. We had two options before us, do we have a motion to approve one of those options?
Second. Which one was?
Yeah, which?
So, I just thought we were... The options, I'm not sure the number, the one with the underground garage.
That's option two.
Option two.
Yeah.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve option two, which we'll hear more about. That's the option with parking underneath the garage, which has much less impact on the trees on the property. So, we heard a lot about this at our meeting a couple weeks ago, but we didn't take any action at that point. There is additional cost involved with this option. Were you going to summarize?
I could, yeah, and we can actually look at some visuals here. So, when we talked on the 16th, when we met, we talked a little bit about how this has been a very long process in place, and so, just to reiterate that, in a nutshell, we've gone from a strategic plan to community conversations, which ended with a feasibility study report. We then identified the requirements for a site, we reviewed multiple properties, and we identified the Bachelor Middle School site as the one which met all of our requirements. And following that, we began discussions with MCCSC and began some site review. We were stopped at that point because the county was making changes to Gordon Pike and installing a new roundabout, and it wasn't until July of this year that we learned what their plans were, and then we really began site development at that point. So, we've identified two potential footprints and building site options from that. Christine Matthew is here tonight as well and can answer any questions that we might have about those plans. But, the board packet that went out contains a lot of really important documents concerning the preliminary design and the construction costs, which the study included the site and building considerations for this 21,000 square foot building. The options, which we're going to look at here, are described very well in that packet. There's also a cost estimate for the probable construction cost, and that was prepared by Blundell Associates, and includes a very detailed estimate in the packet. We also have an overview of our branch project finance plan, and it compares the cost of each of the options, which we'll review this evening. And finally, we have a forestry report, which reviews the forested area at Bachelor, and it provides a really good look for us in terms of the health of the forest, construction impacts, and invasive species control, all of which were really important for us in terms of our planning. But, I'll take us through the options now and take a look at them. So, here, this is, if you're looking in the packet, this replaces page nine, and what it replaces is, this includes, which we received yesterday, this includes the property line. So, you can see the dark lines that surround the property, this would in fact be the property lines for the library. The building itself is unchanged in terms of how it's sited from what the packet has. So, you can see, this is an aerial view, so you can see the trees beneath the area, it's not particularly clear here, but, so, from the perspective of your packet, you can also see where it lies. The next photo is clearer in terms of just the layout out of the building itself. This is, again, this is option one as this one was, so it includes a parking, surface parking on both sides of the building, which is east and west, and the building is in the middle. Entry is from, this face, the building faces Gordon Pike. This shows the new rotary, which is to be built, which is to the west of the building, and that is also, it connects to the new entrance to Bachelor site. And then, entry to the library property would be north of the rotary and going east into the property. And this, the third aerial view is a more complete view of what the, it's called the grading, I don't know if that, if I was clear, when they grade, this is how far the impact would be on the property. This is the second option. So, this option is the one which we're discussing, which has the parking garage. So, from this, you can see the impact on the trees as well, and how it would essentially be the same otherwise in terms of how it faces Gordon Pike. There's one surface parking lot to the west, none on the east, because we would enter under the building on the east for additional parking.
Can I just comment?
Yes.
I would just like to have it noted that we are using all the untreed land that we really can.
That's correct.
When you notice that there are trees to the back of the property line and trees to the, I don't know, is that northwest?
This is, this is east.
Okay, to the east, and the library is as far west as it can go and as far...
South.
South as it can go, and it is incredibly working around the trees of the piece of property that MCCSC was willing to sell us.
That's correct, and which met all of our site requirements.
Correct.
This is just another view of the same sighting, again, without, with parking on only one side, and this finally is the view with grading and how much impact might have. Any questions on either of those two sites, or specifics about what each one has?
I just, sorry.
Go right ahead.
The inside of the library would be exactly the same with both options, correct?
Yes, that's correct. Yes, it's a 21,000 square foot building regardless of which site, there's no difference in what we would be getting in terms of the facility itself, it's just that we would be, with option two, we would have an underground garage, which in effect is also an additional 21,000 square foot of space for us to use in some other ways should we need to, particularly in areas of storage, if we find that we have adequate parking otherwise.
I was going to bring that up, and you just did, but when we talked about the garage or not the garage, you mentioned that frequently when we get shipments of new books in, that they take up a lot of space, and you have to keep them around a while until you're ready to put them in the stacks, things like that, and so, that having a place where we might be able to use that might be an important thing to think about.
Yeah, probably we'll be okay with books, but I would say that one of the things that the garage does do for us is, in terms of just delivery of materials, it's a covered area, so, we can bring things in as we're delivering, and particularly for books, obviously, that's important, but it also does offer an opportunity for some kind of storage if we needed to.
And I was wondering, since the garage is such a huge space, could it also be used for activities that might have been outside, instead of having it inside if it's raining or something like that?
Well, I suppose that really depends on how much parking is used, it wouldn't be, that wouldn't be the plan, the plan really is for parking, but for future uses, and, you know, certainly, we could explore that.
So, the parking lot shown to the east says 41 spaces?
On option one.
Yes.
On option one, and then on option two, that goes away and is replaced by a 21,000 square foot parking garage underneath?
Correct.
And you're saying, maybe use it for all parking, or maybe storage, or whatever?
Correct.
Future stuff.
I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
Well, I just, we'd build it as a parking lot to start?
Yes.
Parking garage?
Parking garage, correct.
Yeah.
How many spaces in the garage, then?
Underneath?
Mm-hmm.
I think it's 44.
So, then we're almost doubling our parking space, then, is that correct?
It doesn't double it, but it, but it's a high percentage.
That says 30, and then 40, right?
No, the parking lot to the west has...
Six.
Has 60 spaces, so it's larger.
It says 66 on one, and then 41 to the west.
Right, and let me show you that. So, in option one, the parking lot is larger, if you notice to the left, than it is in the next one. That's another reason why the building siding is a better site for us with, to, in terms of surface used of land, so...
Yeah, it's 55 spaces to the west in two.
Yeah, correct.
And then 50 garage spaces?
Correct.
So, that's 105 total, what's the total in option one?
107.
Oh, so it's really close.
107?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, we feel like the parking's going to be adequate, and actually, we'll just know over time whether or not that diminishes or goes down, and that would allow us to make...
How many parking spaces do we have out here?
Thirty-seven.
Okay, okay.
So, then, in ongoing expenses, I mean, you would need an elevator?
We would.
Because you're not going to be a single level, so you'd have the initial expense of an elevator, the expense of a parking garage is more expensive to build than surface parking.
That's correct.
And ongoing maintenance for the elevator.
That's correct. Yeah, there's some trade-offs. Certainly, we talked a little bit about this last time, in terms of the trade-off in maintenance of surface lots, in addition to drainage issues and other things that are related to building surface lots. But, yes, there would definitely, and in fact, we considered whether or not we wanted to do that with an elevator, because there's an additional maintenance and just upkeep on it, but overall, felt like it offered a better opportunity and way to enter the building, as well as the amenity of having a covered area and a covered garage and the land use.
Well, it's great for tornadoes.
Yeah, well, that's a very good point.
Is there any handicap spaces in both the garage and the surface parking, then?
There would, that's a requirement, I'm sure, yeah.
As an emergency off-site space for the school?
Yeah.
When you have to evacuate the school?
Mm-hmm.
Having that garage there and the covered space would provide an opportunity also for the school.
Great point.
Are we going to get into the prices later?
Right now.
Okay, we'll find out how much extra, I mean, I know we talked about it before.
Well, we were talking about the cost of the ongoing maintenance, it was brought up last week, there'd be some savings with like, snow removal and that, from having less surface lot, so...
Well, it seems like, I don't, I don't know, my opinion would be that if money was no object, number two would be great.
Your opinion is what, I'm sorry?
If money was no object, number two, it seems like a no-brainer.
So, the question about whether or not we would have the same footprint of the interior of the building, this is just, this is, this is not set in stone by any means yet, but this is the size and the shape of the interior regardless of the option that we choose, and this does encompass all of those things that we had identified in our feasibility study that we wanted programmatically, it all fits. So, we may move some things around in it, but this is, this is the plan. And that's the plan with things inside it, with furniture and bookshelves.
And not to get off on another tangent, but this library is in a location for many, many, many people to walk to.
It is, it's in a great spot for that, and one of the things that the community asked for was also, was to be in a highly populated residential area, but also near trails and schools, and it meets all of those requirements.
Then, my question would be, why do we need an outside parking lot?
If people are walking?
Yeah.
Well, that, well, I will say that parking was the number one thing that people wanted, they wanted the ability to drive there if they wanted.
Parking surfaces, you do have to maintain those.
Yeah.
And there's an expense for those. Is it feasible to just do the underground and not the other parking?
I wouldn't suggest that, just based on our current strategic plan, where parking is the number one complaint.
And with the growing population down there, and a huge, a big population down there, I think many people, it'd be convenient.
And that, I mean, you figure you're stretching down, you know, Harrodsburg, Smithville, so, a lot of people will utilize this branch, they'll need to drive there.
As well as the south portions of Bloomington.
Mm-hmm.
So, the walking is a minute number of people that would be walking there?
Well, I think there'll be a lot of workers, but I think that'll only be a portion of the people who are visiting the library.
Okay.
This is, this is just a conceptual for the parking garage, so you can get an idea of how the spaces would be and where the entrance and exits would be.
I think someone asked last time, that would there be a place for an electric car to plug in, or, yeah?
Electrical vehicles?
Electrical automobiles, a lot of times, they're becoming more popular.
Well, there isn't a plan for that right now, but obviously, this is conceptual at this point, so...
It wouldn't be difficult, right?
Or scooter parking.
And so, now, the costs. So, this, and I don't know whether, Gary, do you want to describe this for us?
I'd be happy to do it.
Thank you. So, this, this is just a description which provides the comparison of our original estimate as well as the two options.
I guess, to summarize, option two would be about a million dollars more than what we have been planning.
$926,000 for this.
So, what it means is that in, our original plan was a $5 million construction bond and a $2 million general obligation bond. So, if we go with option two, we can increase the general obligation bond from two to three million, and stay within that 10 cent tax rate guideline.
So, in other words, and this was, we talked a little bit about this last time, what we would be doing is we have a, we have a general obligation bond, and we would have a construction bond, and right now, we run right around 10 cents for our tax rate, we would continue to be right around 10 cents, we would just lower the operating or the general obligation bond amount, or, excuse me...
Yeah, we would lower the operations tax rate to slightly under nine cents, which is what it's been running, to balance out anything that we might be over on the debt rate. And the way the debt rate will go is, is because assessed value increases over time, we're kind of looking at at least eight billion for next, for 2022, and within five years or so, it's probably reached nine billion. The average bond payments are going to be in the $850,000 range, so when assessed value gets to 8.5 billion, an $850,000 bond payment would be one penny. And then, once we go past eight and a half billion, we'll be less than a penny on the bond payment.
So, I guess ultimately what we're saying is there is a plan, which will cover option two within our current tax rate.
So, I mean, a million dollars about is nothing to just go, oh, sure, why not?
I agree.
So, I mean, that's what I'm wrestling with. I mean, it would be lovely to have a garage and for many things, but, I mean, as taxpayer money, we obviously take that very seriously, and just what is your guesstimate about affordability to pay the extra million? It looks like on paper, we have the money?
And, and as, as we have, I guess, said, as far as our long-term plan, and you, and you can see it from our history, it's to keep that total library tax rate at about 10 cents.
Right.
And so, with assessed value going up, that means our, the library's revenue is going to go up. This debt payment at the $850,000 level fits, it fits very well with that increased assessed value, because it, it keeps us near the 10 cent level, which we, over a long period of time, we don't want that to drop, and this plan keeps it steady.
And I do know from other building projects I've been involved in, many people do like a covered option, especially as you get older, I've heard that, but...
Am I correct in saying, or asking if there is a motion on the floor? That's how we're talking about it, and you recommended which option?
Option two.
Option two with the...
With the parking underneath the garage?
Well, have we discussed it enough? I'd like to call a question.
I'd like to ask a question if option one, then, because the motion was for two, is off the table?
No.
No?
We would vote down option one, we would vote...
There's only one, there's only one motion. Two, and if that is voted in favor, presumably, people wouldn't vote in favor, or the majority wouldn't vote in favor of option one, but anyone could put a motion forth after we move on from this one for option one, but the outcome of this will be indicative of what might happen with that other motion.
I want to ask just one more question about the tax rate. So, you were talking about how with the new assessment rates, as they increase, that keeps us at about the level of nine to 10 cents, right?
Under 10 cents, is what I heard, right?
Right, which is our goal.
Yes.
So, should we not choose option two, and we chose option one, with that additional monies, would we have future building plans, would we, what would we do with that? Because we're looking at trying to maintain that level, so I'm just wondering, what, what would we affect by making the decision for option two, because...
Well, we would basically affect the bond payment and the debt levy amount. So, so the difference would be, between option one and option two, would be between a tenth of a cent and a twentieth of a cent.
Okay.
So, it's a very small difference, that one million dollar increment on the tax rate is really small.
Okay.
I have a question. What happens in 2024, or what is projected to happen in 2024, that the net assessed valuation is going to jump up 400 million as opposed to the 200 million that's shown for '23, '25, and '26?
What page are you on?
That's a very good...
Page 40.
Very good question.
It's just interesting, when you look at the net assessed valuation, it says eight billion in '22, 8.2 in '23, then it jumps to 8.6, so it goes up 400 million in 2024, and then in '25, it's back to 200 million, and '26 is 200 million.
That's, that's a great question. When I originally did that, I intended to do 200,000 a year increase.
200 million, yeah.
And then when I looked back, I saw that it doubled up one year, but then, I decided that's probably a good thing, because look at what we increased from 2020 to 2021, nearly a half billion dollars.
Yeah, 494 million, yeah. I guess I should be asking, what's happening next year?
Yeah.
Holy man. Okay.
Well, I would like to just echo what Kari said, is that, you know, especially in this time period, you know, we can say it's, you know, a miniscule tiny bit, but people are going to see a million dollar increase in terms of the cost, they're not going to see the, we're keeping the cap under nine to 10 cents on the assessed value. So, I'm wrestling with this in terms of how the optics appear to the community. I know that they want a parking, they want parking, they want parking, we want to do this, and I think the branch is something we need to do, and I want to do...
There are also a lot in the community about preserving the space that's there, so, I mean, that's also a consideration.
Say that again, I didn't hear what you said.
Preserving the space that's there, the smallest physical imprint we could make, I think is important to the community.
And as far as the actual dollar amount that this impacts, if, on an asset with a hundred thousand dollar assessed value, a one penny tax rate per hundred dollars of assessed value works out to about $10, works out to $10. So, if we go with option two, and the actual debt fund rate in the first part of the repayment period is 1.2 cents, then that means on an asset with a hundred thousand dollar assessed value, that equates to $10.20. So...
Two cups of coffee at Starbucks.
So, it's, it's not, when you get to the individual basis, the difference here is minuscule.
Because of that, I think we need the garage, and I think we ought to have a vote on your motion.
I'd like to explore, just not to belabor the point, what is the maintenance cost for the elevator every year? What is that going to be? cost for the elevator every year? What is that going to be? 10,000, 5,000, 2,000? Do we know?
Well, I can tell you that on the elevators we have here at Maine, I think the annual maintenance runs around 9,000 a year.
And we have.
That's for two, two.
Two, three, four. We have four elevators, floor elevators, okay.
So.
And then the other thing I'm looking at is, you know, this building is going to be around a long time, and so what's the best value 30 years from now to the community? Is it with the garage? Probably, you know, that, so I'm torn too. I mean, I look at a million dollars, but then I look at the long-term.
You're looking at a big investment for a long time.
Asset of what this building represents to the community, with a garage or without a garage?
Yeah, I really hope that we could accomplish, I mean, it looks like it could be a lot prettier without the parking to the east, and hopefully, there would be a lot of windows.
There will.
To the east and north, which would overlook that nice forested area. And, but it does look like our, we're driving down to the north and pulling in the garage there.
Well, the roadway is north of the building and then around.
And we pull into the garage on the north, yeah. So there has to be a little work there, maybe some landscaping to kind of hide that, you know, from the view, but yeah, as long as the upper, if we have a lot of windows, and you could sure make it look better as you approach from the east without the parking lot there and.
Yeah, and perhaps Christine can, can step to the, up and, and speak a little bit to, to the view, because it's definitely true on the east side, it's a lot more attractive.
I didn't see Christine there, but you had, you cited a number of advantages in terms of, you know, we would have had to fill in that land where the garage would be, and other things that you saw advantages to option two, if you could go over some of those?
Absolutely.
Thank you. There is a drop from the west entry elevation to the east entry elevation of 15 feet in elevation. So we have to deal with that 15-foot grade change, no matter what we do. And this is where the garage came in, because if we don't put the garage in, we're still going to have to backfill under the building 15 feet high at the east end, and then, of course, it would taper off as you moved west. But there was still a lot of effort, including retaining walls, all the things that go along with that grade change. So when we were looking at it, and we realized that the library would very much like to keep everything on one floor, for lots of good reasons, operations-wise, security, all those things, we realized that if you entered from the top floor and kept everything on that floor, it made a perfectly wonderful opportunity to do what would be considered the most green thing you could do on site, which is to put the garage under the building. We're very aware, and it's become even more apparent in the community, that the trees are important for lots of reasons on that site. And we really love the idea, the whole library loves the idea, that we're nestled in the trees. And the thought is that if we do go with the garage scheme, that we do have a clear site on the east side. On the upper floor, you get views out, because there's a hillside there, but you also have an open area where we could start accommodating some of the amenities that we talked about in the feasibility study. For instance, outdoor spaces for school groups during the summer. The, the area there is a natural slope down. It's possible it could become a small amphitheater, could be a terrace down there, but it, it offers a link, a direct link to the natural conditions of the site. And option one has parking on both sides, plus a drive on the north and Gordon Pike on the south, so it's bound in by, you know, asphalt. Whereas this one does give you an opportunity to start linking the building very directly with the site. So we like that quite a bit. Is that answering the question, or?
Can you talk a little bit about the windows, how they would be on the, on the north side in particular?
Yes. What we've been, in fact, if you put the floor plan up. Well, first, actually, go back to the parking lot for a second.
This one?
There you go. The parking lot, you know, there's certain requirements for every parking lot. You have to have a minimum dimension for the aisles, minimum depth of the parking space itself. So there's certain rules that apply to this particular site.
This is the garage.
This is the garage. So when we started looking at the edge conditions for the trees, started looking at what the topography was and everything else, and then started looking at using the lower level as a parking garage, that kicks in all the dimensions. So we started developing a plan that would work for the parking garage, and it simultaneously worked extremely well for the library main floor as well. So the two are dovetailed very much together. So if we go to the floor plan now.
The floor plan?
Yeah.
This one?
Yeah, that's great. So the thought is, and as Marilyn said, this is sort of the first rollout of an idea, is it was really taking what was in the feasibility study and trying to put it into the plan to see how things fit, and starting to look at adjacencies, things like that. But if you look at the plan, on the far right is the main reading area, and that's the area that's up high. You're up on the second floor, and you're looking out towards the east. If you look at the north side, where we have the large meeting room in the middle of the plan, and then we have the children's area up on the upper right area of the plan, those, again, they engage with the woods to the north. And because you're up on the second floor, sort of above that driveway, I don't think you'll even notice the driveway, because the driveway is pretty close to the building. What you'll see is you'll look into the canopy of the trees. Then along the south side, where we really want a public kind of face of the library, we want to make sure that people know where this library is. We want to make everybody feel that it is really part of the identity of their community. So that face of the building is where the staircase goes up, and you'll see activity in that staircase. It won't be an enclosed stair, it will feel like it's very open. And that, again, engages from the lobby on the left, where the main entrance is, and then as you move to the right, it spills out into that open area that I've been describing, and also allows you to get into the parking garage pretty easily. So I think that's pretty much, and then the west side, of course, is your approach from the parking area. We really tried to get a certain amount of parking upstairs at the same level as the main floor of the building. We had as our goal 50 spaces, because there are a lot of people who would want to walk straight in. Right now, the garage, and that, and the people who are more nimble and want to take the stairs would be at the east end, but the, but the staircase still feels like an entrance to the building. It doesn't feel like you're going through the back door. So we're really trying to make sure that we had two places where you could enter and felt like you were being welcomed into the main body of the building. But the, our thought was that if you do go with the garage, in a way, all the pluses that go along with that experience, in a way, equalize that, you know, walking in from grade at the upper level on the west. You know, both schemes work well. I mean, the garage, again, money's involved, but the, from the standpoint of its, the building's engagement with the site, option two works better. Yeah. And the other thing that's nice is that although Bachelor is right to the north of this, great location for a school to take advantage of a library nearby, but the woods are a wonderful separation between the two. The building, the library, will be seen as its own entity, its own separate institution, and that's one of the advantages that we've discovered in, in looking at this building and how it faces Gordon Pike. We had considered facing it to the driveway of the school, but I think it would have felt more as if it was part of the school, and really, this is intended to be a community library. Any other questions or thoughts?
Yeah, I had a question. I don't know how much it'll come up with this library, this branch, but I know with this main library, one of the things that we've tried or wanted to do in the past, and have never been able to do very much, is increase the number of hours we're open. But because of the floor plan and the way it's built, it was always, nope, you got to be fully staffed, nope, can't do it. We can't just have like a reading room that would be open late, or a computer center. The entire thing's like a huge battleship, requires the entire crew to run, can't be done. So when I hear you say, yeah, it's really important to the library to be all on one level, and I look at it, I go, here we go again. You know, the whole 20,000 square feet's got to be wide open, the thing can't be partially staffed, you know, it makes me wonder. I look at things like, there's a staff entry, and there's some little alcoves and kind of places to hide, and I think, yeah, maybe this would be hard to manage. Is there going to be any thought given to, like I said, it's a branch, so I don't know if you're going to care about extended hours, but it seems like our patrons are always like, God, the library's closed, really? I mean, they're just, they, and I'm not talking about the pandemic, but in the past, they've been just, you know, desperately wanting us to be open more hours, and we've just been unable to do so. So part of me is like, good God, I don't even want to do this branch and have this responsibility and think about this, and have the darn thing built, and then go there and go, shoot, we really missed that one. So I do think there's some really neat things about the design, but one thing that, that I'm wondering is, have we given thought to, would it be open to a smaller?
We've been trying to think about, we have, obviously have exiting requirements for a building like this, many exiting requirements, but one of the thoughts is, can we look at the plan? We've been looking at the plan where you could actually close off part of the library, the main body of the library closed off, probably with a rolling gate possibly, and still allow two exits out, plus access to bathrooms, plus access to the big meeting rooms. So that's one of the things that we've been looking at. There, there's a lot of competition for what wants to be on that lobby. Everything wants to be on the lobby, so we're doing some creative negotiation right now. We'll be doing that a lot, I think, later this week, of trying to find out what really needs to be on the lobby. But the thought would be, is if you did have a nighttime meeting, if you could close off the rest of the, of the building and keep the building on the west side open, you still have your two exits, you've got your parking lot at grade, there are lots of opportunities, and it's something that did come up and has come up in conversations, what you're describing. Over on the left side, right now, for instance, on left side, we have the currently, and this is going to be changed, possibly, up in the upper left-hand quarter is the staff area. They need their own entrance into the building. We have below that, along the west side, we have a team.
Why do they need their own entrance?
They normally come in and have a separate entrance.
Well, yeah, they normally do, but why do they?
It's just, it's another.
Library custom?
It could be for things that are being delivered and other things, so we're staffed to get in without going through a public area with stuff. I'll, I'll add to this conversation. Yeah, we were very interested in finding ways, particularly for the meeting rooms that we could be open at hours that were not normal library hours. So as, as Christine said, my first, my first thought on this one was that we would have the meeting rooms sort of on the side when you entered, but, but we've got it, another plan here that, that actually makes good use of being able to get to the restrooms and the meeting rooms that could be at a time other than normal library hours. The other piece that's here, there are two areas that are here. One is that, the community teaching kitchen, so it is in that space where it too could be open, so that there could be things that could be at different hours as well. And the other one is a collaborative space, which I could also see could be more of that entrepreneurial invitation kind of spaces that we could offer, and that too could be in a space here. So this, every, pretty much everything to the left offers the opportunity for us to be able to do that.
The other thing is the, what we discovered on the Elletspill Library is that on the big meeting rooms there, there's a reception space outside those rooms, and especially when you have large, for instance, children's programs or whatever, you don't necessarily want all the commotion that comes along with that right in the heart of the library. So by putting the reception space outside those meeting rooms, it's connected with the rest of the library, but at the same time, it has its own place, and, and you can basically separate the people who are there for an event from the people who are coming in to the main entrance of the building. And you could effectively, if you wanted to have school groups come in separately, they could come in the staff entry, because there, if you'll notice on the site plan, there's a drop-off area on the west-hand side, where, on the west end, where buses would drop the kids off. And if you wanted them separate from the main entrance, you could bring them in through the staff entry and take them right into the program room. But that's really, that's really a, a management issue, but it's one of those things, there are, there are options, and there's some flexibility.
Is one of your exits?
I, we would not necessarily have to have that exit, but it is right now serving as one of the exits, yes. Right now, we have three exits out of the main floor. We have the exit through the staff entry. We have a stair at the east end, and then we also have the entrance into the lobby on the south. And then you also have, in addition to that, the staircase that goes down. So there's, you know, plenty of exiting. We're trying to find out if we absolutely have to have the stair on the east. I suspect we will have to have the stair, but we're, we're testing that right now, trying to find out legal distances and things like that. So.
Yeah, and I know this is, I mean, it's kind of fine tuning when you haven't even decided whether you're going to have the garage or whatever, and I apologize for that, but I just, I, I looked at it, and I thought, oh, my gosh, here we go again.
It's a great question, and because it is something that we have, that we've struggled with, and, and there is community desire for it.
Yeah, well, it'd be great, you know, on that south side, or in that neighborhood, if people wanted to have a meeting room or a neighborhood association meeting, that'd be wonderful amenity for them to have, that, that often the schools can't do because of the way they're, they're structured and operated.
Yeah. So, so in, in terms of just general layout also, what we've been taking into consideration are acoustical issues. For instance, there are certain spaces that want to be more quiet than other spaces. So what we have done is we've kind of put the quiet spaces towards that, those contemplative views out to the east, and then we have the noisier spaces on the west. The children's space runs along the north end, but we're suggesting, though it's really up to the library, we're suggesting maybe you put full glass windows between it and the main space. You can see the activities, but then you have the separation of the sound. And that's, that's, we haven't discussed that at all, but that's what's shown on the plan right now. So, yeah. Any other questions? Hey, thank you, thank you.
Are there any further items for discussion? Not before the vote, but there is a public comment. Well, you can talk to us about that during the public comments section, which is coming up shortly. Seeing no more discussion, all in favor of the motion to approve option two, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Thank you. We have one other, we have an item of new business. Need to pull it up here. So this is related to a number of social media posts recently that were characterizing some decisions of the library, and the library wanted to respond with the library's point of view on these things, so a post was drafted to circulate on our own, you know, website and social media, and in order for the board to add our name to that, we should approve that, endorse that in a meeting here. So I'll read the statement that was drafted, and then we can see if there's a motion to endorse that. So it reads, "A number of public social media posts over the past few days allege that the library recently fired staff in a discriminatory manner. This is woefully inaccurate. Our employees are incredibly valuable to our library and to our community, and we have taken many careful steps throughout the pandemic to ensure." to ensure their physical and financial safety and security. The library closed on March fourteen. While many full and part-time public service employees throughout the country were laid off, we continued to pay all of our staff their full salary and benefits through August 24th, regardless of their position. This included those who were unable to perform their essential job duties remotely. Additionally, detailed health and safety procedures were developed prior to all staff returning to work, ensuring that personal protective equipment, detailed safety measures, and a critical review process were in place to slowly and cautiously move through multiple phases of service. This measured and careful approach was adopted for the sole purpose of protecting our staff and the people of Monroe County. As recommended by the State Board of Accounts, the Library Board of Trustees approved on August 19 an internal pandemic public health emergency disrupting work policy. This policy is intended to ensure core library activities, including shelving books, can be maintained during any public health emergency that poses a threat to library operations and services. Under this policy, when a status of returning to work onsite is established, all staff, except those who have a medical accommodation or similar work arrangement, must return to work, use accrued leave, or take an unpaid leave of absence. As a steward of your tax dollars, we at MCPL must carefully consider how our actions meet our community's needs. At this point, we need all of our staff onsite to actively provide services. Any library staff members who elected to resign did so because they either could not perform their respective duties remotely or for other personal reasons. In this time of great anxiety and prolonged uncertainty, it is not surprising that we sometimes seek simple and concrete answers to help explain unfortunate circumstances. While this is perhaps understandable, please know that these allegations are inaccurate." And then that would be signed from the library administration, and if we endorse it, the Board of Trustees. So is there a motion to endorse that statement, which was also sent to us over email?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Thank you again. And now we have public comment. If any members of the public in the room or people viewing out in the lobby would like to address the board, please come to the podium, state your name, and share your thoughts with us.
Hello, my name is Claire Quimby, and I'm a homeowner on Gordon Pike. I just want to say first that as mom of young kids, I'm really excited about the library coming to our community and our neighborhood. And I'm also, you know, worried about what it means. Obviously, our street has seen a lot of change in the last couple of years. I'm particularly sympathetic to what's happening to the neighbors I have who are right on the roundabouts, both the one that got finished and the one that's planned. It's definitely disrupting what our neighborhood feels like. I'm obviously happy that the board voted in favor of option two, because it's going to minimize impact. And I just want to encourage the board to continue to think about the, the ways that the library can become part of the site without totally disrupting what it is to the neighborhood. I'm really happy that you thought about the trees. I'm sure I voiced that opinion in the surveys you sent out. I wish I had participated in earlier public comment periods. I had a kid last year, so that was a bit of a distraction. But I might have asked for an option that put a parking lot to the north. I know that disrupts trees, but I also saw in the packet that there's a lot of invasive species. There's plans to replant trees, to add, you know, trees that would be more beneficial to the landscape. So I just hope the board continues to think about things like that, things that are going to make the library both beautiful for people visiting it, but for the people who live directly across the street and who are now looking at buildings and parking lots instead of for use. Particularly that field, it's a great place to develop into amphitheaters or whatever. Right now, it's where I fly kites with my kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quimby.
I'm Andy Qualls, and I have curious distinction. I grew up in Bloomington, so I remember the library, from the old library up to the Rand Freever Library to this incarnation. And so I now live on Gordon Pike, across the street from where this is happening. And this is a certain quelling of my enthusiasm, I guess. Because one of the first things I noticed when they put in the Kroger is the light pollution just shines right in our eyes at night. And so one of the things I would hope the, when they, I, I haven't seen the elevation package, but I would hope that when they develop the lights, they have downward focusing light. And so from what I can just surmise, I don't see the picture here. If you show, can you show the picture of the option two? Whoever's controlling the slides? If, because if you show the, if you show the, the, anyway. Claire and I live next door to each other, across the fence, and we, our driveway is conspicuous on here. So the option two would be better, because it would look, we would not be looking at a parking lot. So the, I'm always concerned about the lights glaring into our eyes at night. And over the time, we have, the trees have grown up, so that we don't see the sports lights anymore, which is nice. And so they're talking about, you're talking about, whoa, that was dramatic. The blue screen of death. So you're talking about the, the, looking out through the west, the east windows into the tree. The trees aren't that high yet, are they? Because you'd be looking over the canopy at that point, is that correct?
I think right now, for sure. And then you get the view. So frankly, you went either way.
Yeah, so you could be looking at Kroger, which.
Who puts their, their.
Yeah. So the, the, I understand the concern about the rates, you know, tax rates, you got to justify all this sort of stuff. But, you know, you got to live with this a long time. And everything you touch in life is a maintenance item, I realize that. But this would be much more aesthetically pleasing than having, you know, a boatload of asphalt poured everywhere around. So I would encourage you to think that maintenance is the cost of living. You know, you eat food, you go to the bathroom, that's maintenance, right? So anyway, the, that was basically it. The, I would definitely even favor the second option.
Thank you very much.
Seeing no other public comment, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you, everybody.